Everyone. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21 and Virginia Code 15.2-1413 and the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted on March 2, 2021, and Chapter 2089 of the 2020 Acts Assembly as amended, and by the authority invested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special session by electronic communication means of the Virginia Beach City Council, Tuesday, April 27, 2021, at 3:00 p.m. This special session by electronic communication means will be held virtually with the City Council members participating via video/audio conference. The purpose of this special session is for the City Council to hold a regularly scheduled workshop. This special section will be broadcast on cable TV, www.vbgov.com, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the City Council prior to the special session via email at citycouncil@vbgov.com. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. Okay? All right, and can we have the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Present.
Councilmember Henley?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Present.
Councilmember Moss?
Present.
Councilmember Rouse?
Present.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson? Will be joining us momentarily. Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Present.
Mayor Dyer?
Present.
All present excluding Ms. Wilson.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, at this point. I would ask you to read the instructions so we know what's going on going forward.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. This is the City Clerk Amanda Barnes. Today's meeting is being conducted electronically and is allowed as described by Mayor Dyer during his reading of the call for special session. Also, please note this meeting is being recorded. To ensure this live electronic event is successful, please note the following meeting instructions must be followed. Presenters, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing. It is important that once recognized, please wait two to three seconds to begin to ensure council hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself. Also, do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as only one feed is open at a time to minimize the echo, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. At the conclusion of each presentation, the mayor will open the floor for questions or comments. Councilmembers will be recognized in the order which they raise their virtual hand. It is important that councilmembers hold their comments until recognized. Also, it is helpful for councilmembers to ask all questions and end by stating you will stand by for answers. This helps to ensure all questions are answered before I move to the next councilmember. Lastly, please lower your virtual hand at the conclusion of your remarks. As for City Council discussion and initiatives, I will follow the same process as previously stated, recognizing councilmembers in the order which they raise their virtual hand. Mayor, members of council, are there any questions about the process? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Duhaney, I think we're ready to get going.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, starting with the city manager's briefings, we're going to cover the fiscal year 2122 capital improvement program as proposed. The first presentation we provided on the buildings, CIP, and that will be provided by Tom Nicholas, our city's facilities engineer.
Mr. Nicholas, if you'll just pause two to three seconds before beginning. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, members of council, Mr. Duhaney, and guests. Again, I am Tom Nicholas, the Public Works Facilities Engineer, and I'll be briefing the buildings and assets, proposed CIP for fiscal years '22 through '27. Next slide, please.
With the presentation. We'll let you know when I'm ready to go again. Mr. Nicholas, you can go ahead and begin. Thank you.
Thank you. There are 13 CIP projects in the Buildings and Assets CIP for which funding is requested at target. This slide shows eight of the 16. I'll be talking about a few of these later in the presentation, but the only FY22 proposed funding is to continue previously authorized approved projects, namely the operations facility renovations, the judicial center escalator replacement, and landfill number two, capping. Next slide, please. This slide shows the remaining five of 13 projects where funding is requested at target. Just for your information, the beach maintenance facility is funded in fiscal years '24 and '25. The Euclid Yard Facility Replacement is in the program as approved but is currently completely unfunded, and the Correctional Center Renewal, it's funded in fiscal years '25, '26, and '27, but only about a tenth of that project is funded. Next slide, please. This slide shows six of 15 programs for which funding is requested at target. I won't go through all of these programs. They're all things that you have seen before and been familiar with, but if you have questions at the end, I do have details on each of these programs and what they fund. Next slide, please. This slide shows the next seven of 15 programs, again, for which funding is requested at target. And this slide shows the last two of 15 programs where funding is requested at target. I would only note that fiscal year '22 for intermediate care facility renewal is no funding because the Department of Human Services confirmed with Management Services that they had sufficient funding in this CIP and did not need additional funding in fiscal year '22. Next slide, please. There are several projects and programs with no changes but which have significant information or issues that need to be communicated to City Council. About two months ago, I talked to you in detail about the operations facility renovations of Building 2, Building 1, and Building 11. Just as a recap, the contract has been awarded and a notice to proceed has been issued to the MEV Clark-Nexon Design-Build Team that took place on the 11th of February of 2021. We still expect renovation of Building 2 to be complete in the spring of 2022. We expect the renovation of Building 1 and Building 11 to be complete in the spring of 2024. And in total, this one project renovates 242,000 square feet and impacts 905 personnel in the Police Department, planning public utilities, public works, and information technology. Next slide, please. City Hall replacement continues to go well. We are still estimating substantial completion in the fall of 2021, this fall, with a move in taking place between November of '21 and January of 2022, staggered per department functions and preferences as to what they need to accomplish at the end of the year and what's most convenient. Next slide, please. Fire EMS Burton Station, you may recall that we were about to award this approximately one year ago, but due to the coronavirus and our funding situation at that time, the city manager placed this project on hold. We came back and briefed you in November, and we're given permission to go ahead and proceed with the award, which we have done. The construction contract notice to proceed was issued in January of 2021, and we will be completing this project in the summer of 2022. Next slide, please. This is a big summer for the Virginia Aquarium. Some projects that I've been talking to you about for the last four, some of them five years. We are currently doing the final inspections and getting certificate of occupancy on the Marine Animal Care Center. This facility replaces the leased facility on Norfolk Avenue and will be a significant asset for the aquarium staff, public, and visitors. Again, we will await the aquarium to provide additional information on when they would like to formally open it, but we will be starting to populate that facility with the aquarium staff, equipment, and animals in the coming weeks. Next slide, please. Also completing this summer for the aquarium, aquarium marsh pavilion enhancements, you will recall that we combined this with the veterinary clinic into one construction contract, even though there were two CIPs. This, we will reach substantial completion in July, which will allow the aquarium and staff to move in with probably a late summer or early fall public opening. Next slide, please. Again, here's just some of the detailed renderings on the veterinary clinic, which is wrapping up, again, tremendously exciting time after many years of planning, funding, and work to get these projects in place for the aquarium staff. Next slide, please. Programs being modified in fiscal year '21, '22 in the proposed CIP, again, there were just two, so out of all of the programs we briefed, we're only asking for additional funds in two. Next slide, please. Various buildings rehabilitation and renewal for is the CIP from which I do most of the general maintenance and repair of city-owned buildings by contract, obviously not with city forces. You are well aware of that. One of these you may not be aware of is that the Virginia Beach Police Department Creeds Training Facility, which opened in 2009, was constructed with Virginia Beach Police Department funding, and it has been maintained by Virginia Beach Police Department staff. Some very hard-working, dedicated folks were on at Creeds until recently, when a few of them retired, a few of them moved on. So, they came to me, we got together and decided it would be best if building maintenance took over the maintenance of those facilities, so we have a request for $200,000 per year into this CIP so that building maintenance will continue what the Police Department has been doing. Next slide, please. Judicial Center Maintenance, this CIP funds general maintenance repair of the Judicial Center Buildings 10, 10A, and 10B, in addition to the buildings and CIPs that I talked about previously and several others. The Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office did a threat assessment, provided initial report in July of 2017, which suggested parking lot Sallyport enhancements. They updated that in 2019, and in this CIP, we have asked for $250,000 in FY22 to plan and design the parking lot and Sallyport enhancements, which will provide additional safety and security for the judges, the sheriff's office staff, and those involved in the transfer of members in and out of the court. We have also asked for $2,070,000 in FY27 to upgrade the direct digital control system, which will improve the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning in Buildings 10, 10A, and 10B. Again, that BDC has reached or is reaching its life expectancy, and we want to make sure we have the funds in place to replace that at the appropriate time. Next slide, please. Projects requested but not funded in the fiscal year '21, '22 proposed CIP. Next slide, please. Again, there are 13 projects that were requested this year but not funded. City manager, city leadership decided that this was not the appropriate year to be asking for additional funds for new starts for CIP projects, predominantly due to the $49 million which has been requested and we hope to be provided for the Building 1, 2, and 11 renovation. There are a number of these, however, though, that they are all important. Every one of them had an advocate, be it a department or agency within the city. But the stormwater facility admin replacement, as we look to the future, hiring and retaining stormwater engineers, is certainly worth considering in the years coming. Voter-Register Our Facility, based on our experiences with the presidential election, the amazing job voter-register our staff did and the challenges faced with Building 14 and the coronavirus, that certainly is a project worth additional discussion. And the law enforcement training academy replacement, as we are in a 1950s elementary school building, training our police, in the coming years, we should have a serious discussion about whether or not that's the appropriate facility to attract, train, and retain the type of individuals we'd like to have on our Virginia Beach Police Department staff. Next slide, please. Again, the last five projects which were requested but not funded. And next slide, please. I would note that I do have backup slides on those projects, but I wanted to save time in my abbreviated timeframe here to enable you to ask questions and also to thank you for your support in what we've been able to do to date and what we will be doing in the near future. Thank you.
Councilmember Tower, and then after Mr. Tower, will be Councilmember Moss. Mr. Tower, if you would go ahead and begin. Thank you.
About the new City Hall and security. Can you tell me what the physical security, describe the physical security for the new City Hall and for the offices and for City Council chambers?
I'd like to respond. Thank you.
Prefer to come talk to you in a closed session. Generally, we don't make security information about city buildings publicly available, but we did tee up a brief for that prior to design, and I'd be happy to come back and refresh you on that. No, the security features that were designed to go into the facility when we completed designer are still the security features that are in the building.
Okay, well, then I'll just ask for the refresher on that. Maybe if you could, we could contact you offline and talk about that. Thanks.
Just remember to try to cast all your questions at the beginning, so there's no back and forth. That makes it difficult for the folks in the room to hear everything. Thank you. Councilmember Moss?
I have a number of questions, but I would like to highlight first for my colleagues, if you sum up, because there's no totals on page two or three, but if you total up on the far right-hand corner, that comes to $183.7 million on the first page, approximately $227.2 million on the second, for a total of $410.9 million for buildings, and we're talking about $455 million for bond referendums. It just shows you some choices that we made, and also to put our bond referendum in perspective, because our bond referendum would protect a lot more citizens and a lot more property. So, when we talk about the bond referendum later, just put in the context that we've already spent in a five-year period roughly $411 million on buildings. Going on to slide four, now I'll go through all my comments upfront. Anytime I see level numbers that are always the same across a six-year period, tells me there's generally very little rigor behind them, because at least at a minimum, there should be escalation for inflation. Either that, or you have declining purchasing needs, because the purchasing power would not stay constant. So, for the city manager, I would really like you to take a second look into the integrity of those estimates, because anytime you see everything ends in zero, and it's the same for six years, it looks like people didn't do their homework. That's just an observation. When you get to slide eight, and it comes back to slide nine, that's $342.97 a square foot. You didn't mention the square footage of the City Hall building in the description, so if you could comment on that and also provide the square footage cost on that, and if there's a difference, I'd like an explanation later. Going to slide 10, I remember when this project was first briefed some years ago, and this might be an old picture, but I commented on the wisdom of putting a sale on a building in a hurricane area, and whether or not the engineering standards of that would take the uplift at the Category 3 hurricane pressing up on that, and what was the instructional integrity of the roof. So, I don't know if that's an old picture, but if it's not, I would like to get the engineering analysis that that particular uplift force thing would withstand Category 3 hurricane uplift on the structure and still maintain its integrity. Question. When we move back into the things being modified, I already made my comment about the maintenance, but Mr. City Manager, I do think we should make a difference in distinguishing, and hopefully we do, that when things are truly maintenance, and the maintenance does not have a life equal to the debt service, that those types of things are being shown as pay-go, but I really think recurring maintenance is an operating expense and shouldn't really belong in a CIP, but I leave that to your explanation later. On the judicial center, I don't know if judges are more subject to threats as councilmembers, but I'd be interested to see the threat analysis, so why that same threat analysis, getting back to Mr. Tower's question, wouldn't apply to the security of parking lots for key city officials and councilmembers as well. In the age of equality, I certainly don't think anyone is more worthy of protection than anyone else, so I'd be interested in that. The general comment on slides 18 through the end, I think we all realize we have very limited borrowing capacities going forward, and so if we actually do go for it, hopefully we will, and the public does approve, addressing our flooding threat, I don't know how we accommodate this and other people's demands for borrowing, because there won't be any capacity left. So, maybe that's worthy, Mr. Mayor, of a retreat topic later, because all these things obviously are meritorious, but not more meritorious than keeping people's homes dry, keeping businesses dry, and keeping our roads to transit. So, I don't know how we accommodate this level of growth in capital requirements in light of our limited borrowing capacity, and that's the end of my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Councilmember Tower, did you have additional questions or comments? Lower your virtual hand, please. Counsel? Mayor, seeing no one raise their virtual hand, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, Mr. Duhaney, I think we're ready to move on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next item to be briefed on the fiscal year 2122 proposed capital improvement program will be roadways, and that will be briefed by David Jarman from the Transportation Division Manager from Public Works.
Mr. Jarman, if you would just pause two to three seconds before beginning your presentation. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, members of City Council, City Manager Duhaney. Again, my name's David Jarman, Transportation Division Manager for Public Works Engineering. Appreciate the opportunity to come today and speak to you about the FY2227 roadway CIP. Next slide, please. We have a brief five-item agenda. I'll try to move through these as quickly as possible, given our time. Next slide, please. We'll talk our overview first. Next slide. We try to break down the CIP into some manageable portions to make it a little more understandable, a little more context there. So, our biggest section of the CIP is on the city funding summary. Let me back up. This is the city funding summary portion, is congestion relief and capacity improvements. This makes up a little over half of the overall funding and covers about $99.1 million. So, you could see the remaining categories there, safety improvements, special projects, maintenance projects, bridge projects, all total up to $192.7 million for years 1 through 6, and it also covers about 58 projects and programs. So, next slide, please. If we take that $192.7 million and apply that with our state and federal revenue that we have, you'll note that our city funding makes up a little less than 61%, and our state and federal together make up a little over 39% for our breakdown. So, our total funding for years 1 through 6 with city, state, and federal is $317.7 million. Next slide, please. So, our next slide, we just wanted to highlight our recent grant awards, and I'll kind of call this our good news slide for the day. This has a lot of great information in here. We wanted to highlight probably five of our, more of our top grant programs that we use, and really, I want to kind of focus in on the chart here. If you look at this, you'll notice the grant award column, these are the awards that we received for the various projects that are listed here, 13 projects. You'll note that totals up to $49.2 million, and our local commitment is $17.3 million. So, this is really great news, and I think if there's one more click in there, I think we put an ROI in there to note that, but the return on that's about 2.85 for our investment with the local commitment, which is great news, and it's really a testament to our staff, our engineer support group led by Katie Shannon and her team, who are doing a great job of picking the right projects, pairing those with the right applications and the right dollar amounts. And again, it's also a testament to City Council for endorsing these projects as we do the application process, and then on the back end, as we secure the funding to appropriate that money and support that with the local commitment. I would also like to highlight on this slide another item of note. If you note here penciled in future RSTP awards, you'll see that here. We'll talk about that in more detail, but this is also good news because it means there's future funding out there that is kind of on deck, ready to be programmed to some of these projects, and that's because we have projects in the pipeline right now. Projects that are awarded have priority over new projects, so that helps us with regards to federal grant funding or other state awards. So, that's another highlight we'll talk about in some of these other slides. So, next slide, please. Sorry, there you go. All right, so we'll just walk through programs with, projects and programs with no changes. Next slide, please. We have a list here of 38 projects that don't have changes and some programs as well, and you'll note here, a good portion of these with asterisks are funded partially with state and federal funding. So, go ahead and move to the next slide, please. So, you'll note that funding is kind of littered throughout our program in various ways with various programs. I won't get into all the details. Next slide, please. And the last four that make up this category. All right, the next slide here is the programs with no changes, and again, this covers a multitude of activities with the city, from bus shelters to street lighting to major bridge rehab, and also traffic calming down there at number six. Another big program for us is the TSI. That's where we do a lot of our sidewalk and turn lane improvements. We also have some of our federal grant funding programs there. So, next slide, please. So, we'll move into projects and programs that are being modified. Next slide, please. Starting with Laskin Road Phase 3, this is the westernmost phase of Laskin Road, would increase to six lanes divided from Republic Road to Phillips Avenue, little less than a mile, and again, this removes the service and feeder roads. The big takeaway on this is we were awarded the $3.7 million of FY27 RSTP funds, but you'll also note down there, again, here's the penciled in totals, $27.8 million between FY28 and '31, which is great news for this project. It gives us a funding plan to get this hopefully to construction in the not-too-distant future. So, the funding noted below is for the FY27 award, and the total project cost there is $33.3 million. Next slide, please. Nemo Parkway Phase 7B, this is the two-lane undivided roadway from Albuquerque to Sandbridge Nemo 7A, total distance about 1.5 miles. It does include the new bridge over Asheville Creek. We were awarded another $5 million of FY27 RSTP funds, and with additional city funding, that project can start construction in October of 2026. The total project cost is $43.7 million. Next slide, please. Next project is Pleasure House Road Phase 1. This is for a five-foot sidewalk improvement from Shore Drive South to North Hampton Boulevard along Pleasure House Road. It includes new curb and gutter drainage and some bike accommodations. It's a short segment, but there's a lot of drainage work in here that needs to be designed and addressed in construction, and there's some additional scope that needs to be modified because of that. So, the total project cost is $2.8 million, and we would look to start construction in July of 2025. Next slide, please. Next project is Punga Ferry Road Improvements for Recurring Flooding. This is, the scope of this project is to raise Punga Ferry Road from Blackwater Road to the west side of the Punga Ferry Bridge, distance of about two miles. the west side of the Punga Ferry Bridge, distance of about two miles. We would look to raise the road at least a foot and a half to address wind tide flooding that occurs frequently in this area. If you're familiar with the southern part of the city, this is one of the few major east-west connectors for folks in that section of the city and coming up from Knott's Island, and so when the roads close, it does cause a lot of detouring traffic and a lot of traffic issues down there. With the additional funding for construction, we would be able to start work in July of 2027, and total project cost is $11.5 million. Next slide, please. Street Reconstruction Two, this is one of our programs. This program is for design and reconstruction of several streets or intersections per year, and essentially, this is when we can't simply do resurfacing or overlay, we need to do a little more sub-based work and more extensive work. So a good example is our operations staff completed three and a half miles of shoulder reconstruction on Sandbridge Road in this current CIP cycle. The project was recently awarded $1.5 million of FY22 State of Good Repair Funds, and those are being programmed as noted below. The average program cost there is a little over $2 million a year. Next slide, please. Traffic Signal Rehab, this is again another program for rehab of traffic signals. This handles traffic signal poles, signal heads, also cabinet equipment. You can see a variety of locations there that are scheduled or underway. There's additional funding that would be requested to rehabilitate two to three more signals each year, and the average program cost is around $900,000 a year. Next slide, please. Final project program in this category is the Traffic Signal Retiming. This allows us to retime major corridors throughout the city to reduce delays and improve safety. You could see there's corridors listed down there at the bottom. The project was awarded $663,000 of FY27 RSTP funds, which is great news, and that money's been shown programmed down below. We'll move ahead to the next category, please. Next slide. All right, so we'll talk about new projects in the upcoming CIP. Next slide, please. Thank you. We'll start off with Holland Road Phase One. This is a short segment of Holland Road from Independence Boulevard to South Plaza Trail. We would be adding additional lanes to this, so it's a conventional and innovative design project here. We would also be limiting the left turns from the shopping centers and the side streets and restricting some of the median movements. The idea here would be to create a super street where we allow traffic to move much more efficiently and with less delays. The project was awarded $16.8 million of smart scale round four funds that's been programmed below, and the total project cost is $24.5 million. Next slide, please. The sister project to that is Holland Road Phase Two, although it's a longer project at 1.3 miles, it's a little bit smaller in scale. It would continue the development of a super street along Holland Road from South Plaza Trail to South Rosemont Road. There would not be additional lanes, however, we would be restricting some of the left-hand turning movements and some of the median movements, and again, to reduce delays and improve safety. This project was awarded a little over $300,000 of FY27 CMAC funds, with again, another penciled in award for FY28 for $758,000 that would fund the remainder of the project. So the total cost on this would be just a little over a million dollars. Next slide, please. Independence Boulevard Columbus Street Pedestrian Improvements, this would be for an at-grade crossing at Columbus Street and Independence Boulevard. The scope would be to remove one of the southbound left turn lanes at this location and provide a median refuge. The project was awarded $352,000 of FY21 tap funds. We would look to start construction later this year. Total project cost is $511,000. Next slide, please. Next project is Independence Boulevard Edwin Drive Intersection. This is one piece of the overall I-264 Independence Boulevard Interchange Study that incorporates innovative intersection design with the Michigan Les on Independence Boulevard, and if you remember, this is very similar to the Indian River Kimpsville Road intersection. This would be similar to the treatment on Indian River, where you go through the intersection, make a U-turn, and then make a right in place of a left turn at the intersection. We were awarded $9.8 million of smart scale round four funds, that's programmed below, and the total project cost is $14.6 million. Next slide, please. Next project is North Hampton Boulevard Diamond Springs Intersection. This is again another innovative intersection design. These score very well with smart scale funding. This would be for displaced left turns on North Hampton Boulevard, so this would be similar to the treatment on Kimpsville Road at the Indian River Kimpsville intersection. We were awarded $9.8 million of smart scale round four funds. Those are programmed below, and you can see the total project cost is $13.4 million. Next slide, please. This project is Parliament Drive Sidewalk Phase One. This is a short segment, a five-foot sidewalk along the south side of Parliament Drive from Coventry to Green Kemp Road. This would also tie into Parliament Drive Phase Two and Coventry Drive Sidewalk to have more of a continuous sidewalk corridor in this area. The project was awarded 700, almost $750,000 of FY21 tap funds, and we would look, let's start construction next spring. Total project cost is just a little over a million dollars. Next slide, please. Last project in this category is another short segment of sidewalk, but important segment along Sandbridge Road from Red Mill Farms Park to Red Mill Elementary School, there's a lot of foot traffic in this area, would provide a connection there, a safe connection. The project was awarded $543,000 of FY21 tap funds, and we'd look to start construction on that early next year. The total project cost is $787,000. Next slide, please. We'll talk about some roadway challenges very briefly. Next slide, please. So we wanted to highlight just a couple of challenges that we're dealing with, with the roadway CIP. Obviously, we feel like we had a very good year with grant funding and grant awards, and we certainly want to continue that success. It does require city funds to be successful, and as we've kind of said earlier, I think we've demonstrated, we can leverage those funds and get a pretty good return on that for our investment, so we're very proud of that, and hopefully the citizens of Virginia Beach will be proud of that as well with some of the improvements that are on tap. Obviously, funding this year has been up and down in some ways due to COVID. We saw some volatility with the state funding, with some of the state revenues. We've worked very closely with our counterparts at VDOT, at the, at the local office, Hampton Roads District in Richmond, to try to resolve some of our revenue share issues, and we feel like we've made good progress there, and also in just dealing with a lot of other changes that VDOT has in their program. It is, it is dynamic. It seems kind of crazy to say that sometimes, but their funding and their SIP is dynamic at times, and we have to react to that, but we do a good job of that, working with the staff and trying to stay out ahead of it, ahead of changes in communication. That's the most important thing. As far as our challenges with right-of-way acquisition, we wanted to highlight those. We have added some additional costs in there for securing consultant services. When we were working through the CIP last fall, we were still, needed some resources in real estate to continue acquisition and keep projects on schedule. There's still resources that are needed there, and so we anticipate using some of these on some of the larger projects that have more acquisition needs, so we put that in as a contingency plan, just to be on safe side. And then finally, we continue to have some delays with private utility coordination. We leverage our relationships with Dominion and Verizon and the other private utilities, but it still takes a little longer than we anticipate with getting designs and relocations completed. There are a lot of projects in the area. As you drive around, you'll see the improvements on 64 on the peninsula, you've got the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, you've got the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel, you've got the projects on 264, and that's just for VDOT. And then as we move down into the locality level, we have a lot of work going on as do other localities. So VDOT has, I mean, Dominion has limited resources and Verizon, just like everyone, and so we, we've experienced some delays associated with that work. One item I'm going to add that's not on the presentation here is just funding as far as bids. Certainly, if you've, if you've been into Home Depot, you know that prices have gone up on a lot of things, and so we've seen some recent bids on some smaller projects come in that were a little bit higher than anticipated, 20 to 25% in some cases, and so we don't know if that's just a hiccup or if it's a trend. Hopefully, it's not a big trend, but we don't know at this point, so that's just something we want to put on the radar. It may be something we have to come back to council later date, but we're just kind of monitoring that right now and keeping an eye on those numbers. So, so with that, I'll end the presentation and take any questions.
Questions?
Councilmember Moss?
I have some general comments. First of all, great brief. It's also to note, if you look in the executive summary of our budget this year, if you go towards the back, over the last several decades, we have kept the average commute under 30 minutes, and I think it's up only a minute over last year. I think that says a lot to the city's continued investment and leveraging to keep our average commute time very, very good compared to the national average, so kudos on the team for that. I would like to talk about, just briefly, that last comment that he made about escalation. I do think that probably this, our CIP is probably not priced, copper just reached a 10-year high on the commodity exchange, and people who follow petroleum prices, which is the base for asphalt and other things, I think we are going to see with the increased stimulus, there was $450 billion in outlays for infrastructure, water, and sewer in the American Rescue Plan Act, and that's before we get to the infrastructure bill now on the Hill, so I think there's going to be a lot of demand relative to supply of raw material. So I was just in Home Depot the other day, and a two-by-four was $6.59, so that I ought to give you an idea of what's happening. But I would now like to make the same comment I made before, Mr. City Manager, I think where we need to be, when we see these level-level funding things, they at least need to be escalated for some inflation index. You can use OMBs or you can use your own, but they are the social inflation across a six-year period of time because that's reality. But on Slide 17, you mentioned a comment, and I didn't know how to read it, you said that those funds are now being federalized, and, and so that means they used to be something before, so what exactly does that expression mean? Now federalized, did state money not come to the state any longer, and the feds are controlling all of it? Just what does that mean?
Slide 17, yes, sir. The SGR program was originally a state program, so it was state funding, and so VDOT has turned that into a federalized program, and so what that does is it gives them flexibility in their programming. So on the one hand, it's, it's a great thing for VDOT to be able to move additional monies around if they need to. On the, on the downside, it federalizes a project, which means we have to worry about Davis Bacon wage rates, potentially NEPA or, or, you know, modified NEPA, so it adds some cost, as it does with anything that's federalized, there's strings that come attached to that. So program started off as state-funded, but the state has kind of changed how they want to handle that, so.
Mr. Moss, did you have any additional questions or comments?
And I'll try to complete them all. I apologize for not doing that. You can come back later at a later date, not even during this presentation. I'd like to know what Davis Bacon Act really adds to the things. I'd like to go to Slide 23, and I'll pose, of course, I'll start on Slide 19 to mark this down, but I know we've done signal re-timing many times during my term on City Council, and I hope that somewhere along the way as we're re-timing these, that we would be acquiring, if we haven't already acquired, software that would be including all these in some kind of a network, and that we would be able to be doing these signalizations as new projects are added. It just seems like this is, we re-signalize, we signalize, I'd just like to know at a later date how we're comprehensively trying to get to a place where it's all in a model like we're doing our film water management, and that's a more centralized look. You remarked on, dealing with Slides 22 and 21, about a number of changes relative to egress and ingress, both from and in the median on Holland Road, which I think anyone who drives that would say it's an improvement, but I, I would like to know from legal later whether or not we owe any economic damages to people as we change the access to their, their property, and how, and whether or not that has been included in the estimates of those projects. I would like on with 23, City Manager, I'd like to get some background later as to what the modeling was done, whenever we're eliminating a turn lane, what that means to the performance of the intersection and average travel time. I have great respect for pedestrians, I would just like to understand how that was assessed and evaluated. And then my last comment really gets to the one I've made a couple times, is we've done a great job with the money that we have, but I think our ability to generate dollars in the future for borrowing is, this is a big question, and I realize we're tied into most of these projects because we're tied into state money, so it's, I wouldn't suggest we need to move anything around here, but to the City Manager, I would think as we move forward and look into the future of CIPs and new things that we found, are we focusing on which projects would make us the most competitive for acquiring new employment, high-wage employment, and are we, are we making the right transportation investments going forward that maximize our leverage to attract businesses and high-wage jobs, and that might take a precedent over reducing traditional service congestion because of the needs that we have as a mayor often talks about, or for revenue, or are we maximizing our CIP to do that? And thank you very much, and that concludes my remark.
Mr. Tower, Councilmember Tower, if you would like to begin your comments or questions, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Mr. Jarman, for that presentation. I just had, one, I want to second Mr. Moss's comments about having CIP projects sort of ranked in some way by their contribution to economic development. I really think that's a terrific idea, and would look forward to more discussions about that. And then I, I just had one question. I know our friends at Lynn Haven River now are concerned about the Nemo Parkway 7B project and its impact on the environment. I believe they have stated their position in favor of a full environmental study before that project is undertaken. Either now, if you can, or at some point, could you, could you give me some information on that and about where, where that issue stands?
Sure. We are currently in, going through the NEPA process right now and the, the environmental assessment on that, and we're looking to have kind of our draft report from that later this summer, and the next step would be to get that reviewed, address any things that need to be cleaned up in that, and then have a public meeting where we take that out and let the public look at it. And obviously, you know, the further away we get, or hopefully get from COVID times, we could have an in-person meeting. If not, we would certainly host a virtual option, or we may have a hybrid, we may have something that does both, but either way, we would make sure we provide a good way to get input from the public, from the folks in Sandbridge, the environmental folks, anyone that has an interest in there along that corridor, we certainly would look to get that feedback.
Mr. Tower, did you have any additional questions or comments?
I do not. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from council members? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, Mr. Duhany, we are moving right along.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be provided by Parks and Recreation. It's on the Parks and Recreation CIP. Chad Morris, Planning and Planning, Design and Development Administrator will provide the presentation.
Excuse me, Mr. Morris, if you would like to begin, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Vice Member, Vice Mayor, members of council, Chad Morris with Parks and Recreation, I'm Planning, Design, and Development Administrator, pleased to present the FY22 through FY27 proposed CIP for the department. Next slide, please. As an overview today, I'm going to briefly talk about projects and programs with no changes, and then go over three significant updates on projects that we have ongoing right now, and then I will discuss existing projects and programs modified from the FY21 adopted CIP, and then have one project requested but not funded project to review with you all, and then have three highlighted projects to describe some challenges that we have with our CIP this year. Next slide, please. So first, we have five projects here with no changes in the, in the CIP. First one is Centerville Recreation Center. Happy to report that the feasibility study has been completed, and with funding projected out in outline years for design as well as a balance to complete, we're happy and ready to move forward and engage the community with that project whenever funds do become available for that project. Also, the other four projects below are all in some sort of design or even construction wrapping up, and project has been clearly funded, and those projects will wrap up in the next couple of years. Next slide, please. And next, we have nine programs listed here with no changes. have nine programs listed here with no changes. A majority of these programs are used to replace our declining parks and recreation infrastructure. To recall, last week, Mr. Kirschman mentioned some of this and some of our challenges with, more specifically, the playground replacement schedule and this upcoming large overwhelming tsunami of playgrounds that are beyond their, becoming beyond their useful life and the opportunity that we need the adequate funding to replace those. Same thing goes for our athletic fields and backstops and lighting as well as our court facilities for tennis and basketball. Also listed here are a couple of golf course programs that are contractual obligations. A percentage of those revenues that are operated from private, from, from private operator are moved into a CIP, and those funds are used for future projects on the golf courses. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we have three project updates. The first one I would like to update you on is the Woodstock Park project. We're very excited with this partnership that has evolved with HRSD and, and their needs and to have a, their needs for a 5.2 million gallon wet what, offline wet weather storage tank for their, for their operations, as well as the Woodstock Park site being an adequate site located to do that. In return, the HRSD is building a 30,000 square foot skate of the art skate park, partially on top of the tank roof as well as off the side and off the front of the, the tank, as well as we get to add the benefit of the, the two-thirds of the tank roof is also going to be open to the public as a roof garden with a green roof. As well, the, the city has contributed $2 million to the project to do some other parking, parks and recreation upgrades such as replacing the shelters, a new park restroom, additional parking spaces, and updating the amenities on that park. This has been a great undertaking that we're very excited about. The park has been closed for almost two years now, and we're getting close upon a ribbon cutting at that facility on June 16th at 10:00 AM. And City Council, you'll be receiving your invites to that ribbon cutting in the next few weeks. In the meantime, if you all would like a, a tour of that facility, I'd be happy to set that up for you all. Next slide, please. Next project I'd like to report on is the Marshview Park project. This one's been in our queue for quite a while, and it's been kind of a soggy, soggy site condition. But we're fortunate now, as of April 1st, to open this park to the, to the, to the public with, with an exception of a couple of upgrades and updates that still need to be finished up out there. But we're happy to get that open to the public finally. This does include an additional dog park into the park system, as well as a multi-purpose field, soft trails and multi-purpose trails, and has been a big hit with the community already. And next slide. Next is the Lowell Green Park project in the Centerville District. We're excited about this one. This is our next probably largest renovation project at a park. That's upcoming. The planning, design, and development team did an excellent job creating concepts and, and going through the extensive community involvement in this, in this park and project. And we're, we're excited about that. This will be our first park that has proposed a splash pad in, within a park facility for all to, to enjoy, as well as other upgrades. And this will make a tremendous park and upgrades in the Centerville District. We're excited that the, the design is ready to move forward, as well with design happening this year and construction of potentially next year with the park opening to the public in summer of 2023. Next slide, please. We do have seven, seven existing programs with modifications in FY 22 adopted CIP. First one is for the community recreation centers, repair and renovation. Mr. Kirschman mentioned this one last week, is, is a $1 million reduction into the FY 22 CIP. Funds usually come from the Parks and Recreation Fund balance for this. As Mike, Michael mentioned last week, that the, the fund balance has been, been hit very hard in the last 18 months. So that million dollar transfer to the CIP is not proposed in FY 22, though we are hopeful that in future years, we'll be able to pick that back up again and continue on with, with the $2 million a year, and, and hopefully maybe even more, which is needed to take care of our capital, capital maintenance repairs of the seven recreation centers. Those are very large, major systems. Some of those are in a pool and aquatic environment and really take a beating and, and are pretty expensive to, to repair and replace. The next slide, please. The next one, Council is familiar with this, this project as well. This was an increase in project costs to, to start and instruct the phase two structural repairs at the sportsplex. We're fortunate, fortunate to have funding in prior years to take care of the phase one structural repairs at the sportsplex. So that is currently underway and being taken care of as we speak. The additional cost, which is in the proposed CIP, is to take care of the phase two structural repairs as well as potentially with funding available to take care of some more electrical and plumbing upgrades at the facility, which, which are needed. Next slide. Next modification is a Three Oaks Elementary Multi-Use Path. This is just a $60,000 increase by transferring funds from another completed project, which is the Lynn Haven Marina Bulkhead Replacement. That project is completed. So that project will close out, and the $60,000 will move to this project, just to get a little more, a little more padding in that, in that budget, in the budget, project budget. This is a, a tap grant funded project as well, and we're excited to get this project moving along, which is ready to start designing. The next slide. Next modification, project in FY 21 is the Violet Bank Trail. It's a .6 miles of a multi-use path, which was unfortunately underestimated in the project cost. So we're trying to help true that up. This is also a tap, tap grant funded project as well. And the, we would propose reprogramming funds from the City Bike Ways and Trails CIP and move them to the Violet Bank Trail project. Next slide. So this is just the opposite of that. This is the City Bike Ways and Trails CIP that shows the $400,000 that would be reprogrammed and moved to the Violet Bank Trail project. Next slide. Next is the Lynn Haven Boat Ramp and Beach Facility. This, this program runs off of the revenues, parking revenues that, for those who park at the Lynn Haven Boat and Beach Facility. This $25,000 reduction in FY 22 is just a true up of the fund. During the Lesnar Bridge project, parking was limited and almost was under, under, underperforming from revenues on that. So this small reduction will help true up the fund. We do anticipate in FY 23 and, and future years that, that will continue to remain at a $50,000 CIP every year dedication from, from the parking revenues. We, we know today that, you know, parking there has been, been very busy and packed due to this being boating being, being a very good, over safe activity. Next slide. And finally, the last program with modification is Open Space and Park Infrastructure Development, Development and Maintenance, formerly known as the Open Space Program. Also, this program is funded through a portion of the meals tax. With that, if you recall, there was a, a tax holiday on the meals tax as well as overall meals taxes not performing due to COVID-19 and, and some of the restriction and guidelines. So $500,000 reduction in, in that CIP in FY 22 is proposed. We are hopeful in future years, starting FY 23, that that will bounce back up where, where, where it was, if not greater. So we're, we are hopeful for that. But that's currently in FY 22. That is a reduction of $500,000. Next slide. And then one project that is requested but not funded, I won't spend a lot of time on this one. City Council is familiar with this. This was also presented recently as part of the Active Transportation Plan Update. This is for the Virginia Beach Trail, which is one of, one of parks and recreation as well as BTACs and, and also noted in the Active Transportation Plan Number One Priority. Next slide, please. And just to go over three challenges, Mr. Kirschman mentioned some of this last week as well. First one being our, our $30 million maintenance backlog, which is growing and will, will really going to hit us here in the next couple of years. Dave Jarman also mentioned the same thing for the increased cost of steel and lumber. Our, our playgrounds are lots of steel and lots of plastic, and all those are, materials are going way up. We're, we're seeing very significant increases in our, in our costs for, for those materials. So our dollars that we do have are going to go a lot less further than we, we need them to go, as well as we have quite an inventory of existing park sites that are undeveloped with no CIP funding on the horizon, as well as how do we balance the, the growing demand for new facilities, whether it's the VB Trail, the Centerville Rec Center, or Three Oaks Park? The challenges and opportunities to, to provide that balance is, is, is tough for us. With that, that concludes my presentation, and thank you all, Council, for your support. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Councilmember Moss?
Well, first of all, thank you for a great presentation. I appreciate that you find yourself in a time of great need when the, the needs for flooding are so huge. It's going to create a lot of pressurization. But on slide 10, don't have any question with the presentation, but I, as a follow-up later, I'd like to understand what is our, what is the plan to, to improve the revenue generation facility? So what is the long-term use as we improve the structural integrity of the facility? What is the plan to make it a, an asset rather than a liability as with regards to the city's balance sheet? On slide 15, I made this comment once before, and I, Ms. Abbott will probably mention it as well, but we need to find a solution, an interim solution that's less than $51 million. I, I just don't see where that even happens even by '27. That would be wishful thinking. Maybe it will be part of this infrastructure plan. We'll be surprised. But need to be looking at some lower-cost ways to start utilizing portions of that right of way. But to the comment, because you're the third person that's presented today that's mentioned the, the rising price of projects. So at some point, Mr. City Manager, as you see what the actual experience on contracts are, we, we may need a mid-year review to rethink how far our money will go. And, and it may be the baskets of things that we have in our grocery basket that we got off the shelf. Maybe that can't be accommodated, and we may need to rebalance what can fit in within the purchasing power, given the rising cost of, of materials and labor. We might need to rethink what projects we can fund on the same amount of money. So I, I hope that you, you'll be watching that and that you will keep us ahead of the curve in terms of not losing our discretionary space to rethink what we thought was good on May 11th, but prove maybe in November not to be something we can achieve. Other than that, that's all the comments I had. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Abbott, if you would pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I had, I had a couple of comments and, and a question leading on to what Councilman Moss has already said. As far as my comments go, I just wanted to express my excitement for the Woodstock Park opening. I think it's going to be really exciting and a great amenity to our community. I haven't been out to walk it yet, but I've driven by it a number of times, and it, it is, it is looking really incredible. So big thanks to all those involved with that one. I did have a question about the Violet Bank. I, I don't know if my side cut out, but I thought I heard you say that we were going to need additional funding for that project and that we were going to be taking it from another CIP. So I just wanted to clarify if you were proposing that we do do that or if that was going to need to come back to us for further discussion. And then my second question slash comment is in regards to the Norfolk Southern Right Of Way and comments that Councilman Moss has already kind of stated. I do feel, and I can tell you, there's not probably a week that doesn't go by that I don't hear from somebody saying, hey, when are we going to get a trail? When is, when are we going to get on that? The article that ran in the paper some months back really re-energized, I think, the excitement around that trail becoming something more. Four years ago, I met with somebody in city staff, and they mentioned that it was, there was a possibility of doing just minimal improvements so that it could be safe to walk. I've personally walked down that railroad a number of times. And, you know, I do think that there is some, there, there could be some improvements. So I'd be very interested in knowing if we could even do an incremental improvements. I think getting it from the tide to town center would be a huge benefit. I know that I have constituents, constituents in Kempsville that would like a safe way to walk to town center, to the tide. And, and I think that bringing that connection at least to there could be of huge benefit. And I also think that there is probably some opportunities out there to partner with our friends in the private sector who run along that right of way, who may see some benefit in having it improved for themselves as well. So I'd like to have a further discussion. Doesn't have to be today, maybe at a later date on what we could do to just make it so that it is safe to walk on it. And yeah, so those are my comments, and I'll hang back for any other questions.
Would you like to respond? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Abbott. I'm happy to, I can provide some brief answers to your questions and happy to discuss further as well. For the Violet Bank, that, that was correct. We are looking to transfer $400,000 from the Bike Ways and Trails CIP to the Violet Bank project to, to true up and get that budget in the Violet Bank project adequate. You're, you're correct. That does come from another CIP. It does cause some, does put us behind on other Bike Ways and Trails projects potentially that we're looking at. It doesn't give us funding to put towards grant matches or to go after other, other types of projects to get grant funded as well. But we're in the middle of a project by Violet Bank, and we needed funding to pick up, pick up the slack to keep that project moving. So that's kind of where we are on the Violet Bank project. For the VB Trail, yeah, there's lots of things to consider as far as doing minimal improvements. I think that conversation is probably going to get a little more serious, just to find a way just to get something down on the ground quickly. I think the thing to do in the short term is figure out a way to have the rails pulled up and timbers, and then figure out a way to get something on the ground quickly, whether it's just some type of easy hard surface, may not be totally ADA, but does get the momentum and excitement going. And then by then, you know, there's a potential for other, other funding opportunities or partnerships, as you, as you mentioned. So happy to be able to discuss that maybe in a later conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Abbott, if you have any additional questions or comments?
I'm sorry. I do. I have just, I apologize for needing clarification again, but is our act of approving this budget give us the revenue we need for Violet Bank? Or does, will it create, or do we need to come back at a later date to do that? Because I believe that project is a grant, is a result of a grant as well. And so I'm concerned that it might be in jeopardy. And I, I know a lot of great people worked on that application. So I just wanted to clarify that if, if simply passing the budget takes care of the problem or if it will be a line item on a future agenda.
Mr. Morris?
Currently, as it stands today, we believe the $400,000 that's being reprogrammed from the Bike Ways, the General Bike Ways and Trails CIP will take care of the Violet Bank project. Though we are obviously experiencing challenge in the cost of, of materials, as of today, we think this will take care of the project, but can't guarantee that we could be short as we go through the rest of the design and have a better handle on, on how these material prices are escalating. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from council members? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Duhany, move them forward.
Okay, Mr. Duhany, move him forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the last CIP briefing will be provided by Kathy Warren. It'll be on economic and tourism development.
Ms. Warren, if you would like to begin, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. I will be presenting the Economic and Tourism Development CIP program for FY '22 through '27. As you know, this CIP proposal includes projects managed by economic development, planning and community development, parking management, public works, housing and neighborhood preservation, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Next slide. So here's the overview for today's presentation. We will briefly go through the projects that have no changes, review the two projects with requested increases, and then finally present the three new proposed projects. Next slide. So first, onto our current projects with no changes. Next slide. We have 23 projects with no changes. All of these projects are familiar to you. You'll see here on the next three slides, the project, the status, and the total program funding. These programs total $226 million, and at the bottom of each slide, you'll also see the funding sources. Next slide. Next slide, please. So before we move on, I would like to highlight one of our 12 fully funded projects, Vibe District Infrastructure Improvements, or otherwise known as the 18th Street Project. This $8.8 million project is on track to begin construction this fall, and calls for new streetscape along 18th Street from Cypress to Arctic Avenue. It will add wider sidewalks, street trees, and utility upgrades. This project will complement the recently completed 19th Street Corridor project. Next slide. We have two projects requesting additional funding in the amount of $850,000. Next slide. For strategic growth area projects, an additional $250,000 is needed to support recommended initiatives as part of the resort area strategic action plan and the resort area mobility plan. In addition, we are asking for additional funding for the 2021 comprehensive plan. Next slide. For Winston-Salem Avenue improvements, we are requesting an additional $600,000 in FY ' '23 to cover escalation of construction costs we've experienced over the last five years. Next slide. Onto new projects, we have three for a total of $9.7 million. Next slide. 31st Street Canopy for $2.47 million. The existing canopy has two years left in its lifespan. This project provides funding for the design and construction of a new permanent canopy for the 31st Street stage at Neptune's Park. The new canopy will be able to withstand hurricane-force winds without having to be removed in advance and be made of a durable material suitable for coastal application. The replacement canopy will fully cover the existing stage, two existing ramps, and front rows. The design of the canopy will feature an iconic shape that will blend with the existing building, park, and surrounding context. Next slide. Virginia Beach Innovation Park Infrastructure Phase Two for $6 million. This project includes the design and construction of an expansion of Hidome Way, a two-lane, undivided parkway, including utility and stormwater infrastructure that extends east from Landstown Center Way, a distance of approximately 1,200 feet. This project includes on-road bicycle accommodations and shared-use paths, as well as long-range planning for the entire Innovation Park. This project represents the second of three phases of what is anticipated to be the multi-phase infrastructure needed to support the Virginia Beach Innovation Park initiative. Next slide. And finally, strategic site acquisition and disposition for $1.25 million. This project provides readily available funding for strategic acquisitions when the opportunities arise in areas where the city is working to invest in or improve areas and may own adjacent parcels. Next slide. And that concludes the presentation for economic and tourism development, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Moss?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions per se on the presentation, but I have some comments I'd like to share. A lot of the stuff that's in there is good things to do, but it mostly focuses on improving or increasing transactional revenues from visitors or from residents, but it's not really focused much on generating high-wage employment. I don't think any of us could have missed that North Carolin, that Apple just announced they're going to create 20,000 jobs in the state of North Carolina over the next five years, and possibly the Research Triangle has a lot to do with that. I think one of the weaknesses that our region has, not this beach specifically, we've talked about skilled workforce and lack of a Virginia Tech equivalent research facility, research chairs. I think the region, Mr. Mayor, needs to think about how we're going to supplement and work with ODU as the leading academic institution on the South Side to create research chairs that create spin-off technology. You only have to look at Blacksburg and look at the job growth that they've had year-over-year in the high-wage part, about 5%, to realize that that makes a big difference. And so I think we need to increase and find a way over time, Mr. City Manager, to, as we under-executed a lot, to build up the discretionary account that's available to the city council and to you and to Mr. Adams to make the difference and act quickly, act quicker, maybe on securing high-growth, highway-paying job opportunities that come our way. And I don't think $1.2 million fits the bill, so I think that's something we need to be looking at, how to harvest resources as we execute, and to allow us to have a bigger capital fund or to secure high-wage employment. That's just an observation. I've had this discussion with Mr. Adams and with the city manager as well, but we are not, we are disproportionately putting our money into consumption, and we're not putting enough money investment into our ability to create the right packages and land acquisition to attract high-wage jobs. Thank you.
Amanda, could I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Moss, you know, just to inform you that there are significant efforts being made right now. We are poised for a really dramatic explosion, especially with the, of jobs coming here, especially with the off-turbines, and we've got subsea cables coming in, the broadband's coming in, and there has been considerable interest in companies coming down here. It's amazing how many companies are interested in coming here now just to get a minute portion of a second increase in speed on some of these cables coming in. But if you look at the GTS factory, the old Alice Creek there, a number of people are being hired now at $50,000, you know, plus a year. And be assured that we're working with the other mayors, with the other cities, with the economic development. You know, I think we are poised for growth now that we have these technologies coming to the forefront, but John, I'll be glad to get together with you for lunch and talk about some of this stuff more specifically.
Any additional questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Moss, did you have any additional comments?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for those comments. I do, I am aware of those developments, but I'm also aware of my discussions both with the manager and Mr. Adams, that at times we find ourselves at the table not able to make the kind of commitments on the spot or close to spot, knowing that we have the funding available on some opportunities for things that are out there. I'm not saying we'll be competitive for the Apple investment that's coming to Virginia or not, so I applaud all that we've done. I'm just saying is when we look at the competition, we certainly can't be disadvantaged if we can increase the capital fund that we have to be able to act without having to go and unprogrammed projects, as we sometimes do, to find the assets and find the capital to do that. I think it's a win-win. I applaud all that we can do, but I do know that we don't, when you look at places like Boston, despite high taxes, and Massachusetts excels, or parts of California excels, it's because the quality of their academic research facilities and their worldwide class, and we just got to figure it's a long-term investment, but it's something as a region, and I know you're talking to the mayors, and I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from councilmembers? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, I think we're ready for planning items.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the planning department will provide a glimpse of the planning agenda items that are coming your way in the next council meetings.
Mr. Kemp, I believe you are first up. If you'd like to go ahead and begin, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. While the slideshow gets set up here, I'll just say that Carolyn and I will be taking the opportunity to brief you on the items that will be considered on the May 4th and May 18th meetings. And with that, we can get started. On the May 4th agenda item, there are four planning items, three of these have which been deferred from other previous meetings. Items one and three were requested for deferral by the applicant, as the applicant's representative was not in town when it was previously going to be considered, and item four is a short-term rental that was deferred as the signposting requirements weren't meant. So let's get started with item one. Though you've been briefed before, here's a quick reminder. This is a request for a street closure in the north end. It is a portion of Holly Road adjacent to 40149th Street. The area is approximately 3,000 square feet. Next slide. This portion of the street to be closed, and the picture shown above is on the left, it is the driveway portion. For years, it has served as the accessway to a single-family house that you can see kind of in the back left of that picture, and there's also a portion of the house, a portion of its porch that sits in the right-of-way. A new property owner bought the home in 2017, and now would like to close it and absorb it into the property. There were, I was a speaker of opposition, and we did receive one letter of opposition. The concerns were about pedestrian access through this right-of-way. Should be noted that pedestrian access will be maintained as only half the road is closed. There was also some discussion about vehicular access, but this has never been a through-road for vehicles, so we, staff thinks there was some confusion. All right, next item, item two, is a closure of a 420-square-foot portion of Atlantic Avenue right-of-way, and this is to accommodate the installation of a freestanding sign for a new hotel at the oceanfront. The freestanding sign must be by city and state code, must be on the same parcel as the hotel itself, which is why this item is moving forward. Next slide, please. A public drainage and utility easement is recommended as part of the approval. It should be mentioned that the easement, it's recommended that a provision be added that because of a reduced setback from the sign to a utility of six feet rather than the 10 feet recommended, an additional provision that would say any maintenance or damage done during so would be covered by the property owner and not the city. There was no known opposition to this request, and Planning Commission recommended approval, nine to zero. Next item, item number three, probably looks familiar. This is Grace Bible Church. It is a modification to a use permit for religious use. The first permit was received in 2017. This modification has to come back to address changes in the parking lot layout, a slight increase in the building footprint, changes to the building elevation, and changes to the initial stormwater management strategy. So if you see on the next slide, what really sparked this was a change in the strategy to manage stormwater caused parking. There was a condition associated with the first use permit that said the parking lot had to be at grade, so with the modification of that condition, it comes back to you at council to address concerns with elevating the parking lot. There are two buffers proposed with this. There is an initial buffer, then the land goes up, and then there is a secondary buffer, which includes a six-foot privacy fence, and that privacy fence is on the elevated ground to further screen the parking lot from the adjacent residential properties. Should also be noted that part of the change of the location of the parking area is that it is moved further away from the adjacent residential properties. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item. The last item on this agenda is a short-term rental. It is, was scheduled, we heard, in April, but as I mentioned, the sign was not posted for the 30-day period, so it was deferred. Staff has gone out and verified, as well with pictures from the applicant, that the sign has been posted for the appropriate period, so it will come before you. The property itself is Zoned A12 and is located in the Old Beach Overlay District. Slide, the single-family residence was constructed in 1939. It contains two bedrooms. There are two required parking spaces, which will both be accommodated on-site in a gravel space adjacent to the home. Eventually, this property is intended to be redeveloped. However, the applicant would like the opportunity to rent this as a short-term rental in the interim, until it is. And that is the last up, sorry, last slide. You will see, as you know, there are many short-term rentals in the Old Beach area. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this item, particularly as it is east of Baltic Avenue, which is a particular area of Old Beach where they felt that this use was appropriate.
Councilmembers, are there any questions for this portion of the presentation? Vice Mayor Wood, I see your hand raised. If you would like to begin, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question on this last one, and this may be a question for Mr. Stiles. If we grant a short-term rental authorization and the property is torn down and rebuilt, does that authorization go with the land, or would it have to be a new process?
It would run with the land, Mr. Wood.
Vice Mayor Wood, any additional questions or comments? Virtual hand raised, if you would like to begin, thank you.
No, I just wanted to hear what the staff member was going to say.
You want to repeat yourself, Mr. Stiles?
If the question was to the city attorney, then my answer is it would run with the land, but typically they are granted for five-year periods, and so it would expire.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes, but I thought I heard a voice start to come over from the staff to make a comment. I just wanted to know what that complete thought was. After the city attorney spoke, I heard a staff member start to speak, but then he got cut off, or I just want to hear his complete thought.
And here, Mr. Kemp's beginning his comments. Mr. Kemp, would you like to finish your comment?
Sir, thank you, Councilwoman Moss. I just wanted to add that Mr. Stiles is absolutely correct. However, when the new property was developed with a new home, they would have to submit a new plan for review for staff to make sure they meet all applicable regulations. a new plan for review for staff to make sure they meet all applicable regulations, particularly parking.
Any additional questions or comments for this portion of the presentation? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, Ms. Smith, would you like to begin now? Thank you.
Actually, Kevin's going to do the next two as there's amendments. So if we could move that, the slide.
As I was under the understanding, I believe that you were going to begin. So, Mr. Kemp, if you'd like to continue.
Thank you, yes. The, on the May 18th agenda, there are 13 items scheduled. I will go over the first two as they are zoning ordinance amendments, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Carolyn, who I'm sure you would rather be listening to anyway. So I will get started. The first item is an ordinance amendment pertaining to communication towers. And what this is, I, I believe you are familiar with an ordinance that changed the fees for communication towers. What this ordinance does is syncs our city ordinance up with state and federal regulations in regards to communication towers, particularly in the way they are reviewed versus an administrative review process and a standard review process. So, you know, this First Amendment makes changes to the rules and regulations to make them consistent. Item two changes the use tables to make sure they are consistent through our ordinance. And then there is one next slide, which I apologize was not included in the Friday package, but I did feel it, it real basically summarizes up what the changes are, and that is when an administrative review kicks in, and that's for communication towers 50 feet or less, the staff is able to do an administrative review. The fee for this is $350, and that's a much easier process than the standard review process for towers taller than 50 feet. This would still, it runs a process much like the conditional use permit. It has a $1,050 fee, and it goes through that process. Also note through this that small cell towers aren't included, and this, those are still permitted by right. So if there are no other questions on that ordinance, I can turn it over to Carolyn, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions or comments regarding the last two items for Mr. Kemp? Seeing no one's virtual hand, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Smith.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So moving on to item three, this is a request for a conditional use permit for a group home in the Green Run neighborhood. And this 5,700-square-foot two-story dwelling will accommodate up to eight girls who have been rescued from horrific trafficking situations. The Samaritan House staff will be on-site at all times, and services will be provided to these children. The applicant met with the Green Run Homeowners Association, and they did provide a letter of support, and the applicant also met with surrounding property owners. Two owners of the adjacent Montessori school spoke in opposition at the Planning Commission public hearing. They are concerned that this could create a dangerous situation for their staff and also for their students, and they specifically fear that the traffickers could seek to abduct the children again. The applicant explained to both the Planning Commission and to the opposition that this is a very infrequent situation, and it, it happens extremely rarely. And the fact is, according to the applicant, that these children that are rescued are simply and very quickly replaced with other children. So despite the opposition, the Planning Commission did vote nine to zero to recommend approval. And the next slide is item number four, which is a subdivision variance request to the density requirement of one lot per 15 acres when subdividing agriculturally zoned property. So the applicant proposes to subdivide this 30-acre lot into two parcels. And on its face, when you do the math, this is a doable request. However, much of the site is within the floodplain, subject to special restrictions, as well as covered with water and wetlands, and these areas are not permitted to be counted towards that minimum density calculation, so therefore they do need the subdivision variance. Only 5.46 acres are outside of these areas. The existing single-family home will remain on a proposed four-and-a-half-acre site, and the remaining property will be noted as a non-buildable lot when it's platted, and it will be, continue to be used for agricultural purposes. Both of the lots will meet the dimensional requirements for new lots in the Ag District, however, they won't meet that one-to-15 density requirement, and there is no known opposition to this application. Item number five is a rezoning application of the City of Virginia Beach for a city-owned parcel in the Oceana Gardens West neighborhood. This property is located in the greater-than-75 noise zone, which is that higher noise zone, and also within accident potential zone one. The city acquired the parcel in 2014 as part of our program to prevent further development of incompatible uses in that APZ1 or in that accident potential zone one on land surrounding NAS Oceana. The duplex on the site was removed following the city's purchase in 2014, and now it is the city's intent to sell this 10,000-square-foot lot to the adjacent properties, who will then incorporate it into their parcels. As this neighborhood is Zoned R7.5, but for some reason, this particular lot is Zoned R5D, this is really a housekeeping issue that simply cleans up the zoning and will eliminate a dual zoning on the re-subdivided lots. This will not result in any increase in density or increase the number of units, and there is no known opposition to this application. Item number six is a request for auto sales on the property at the northeast corner of Newtown and Baker Roads. This 37,000-square-foot lot was originally developed in 1969 and can accommodate up to 74 cars on display in an orderly manner, and this is depicted on the layout plan that's shown on the screen. Properties developed in the 1960s, before we had specific landscaping requirements, do sometimes face difficulty meeting our new standards. So based on this, the applicant is requesting a deviation to the foundation landscaping and also the display area planting requirements. The applicant is able to install foundation plantings along two of the three facades and also install 50% of this, the display area requirement. So in return for this deviation, they are proposing to beef up the streetscape plantings, and those are shown as green circles on the, on the layout plan. No auto repair is proposed nor allowed as per the recommended conditions, and there is no known opposition to this application. Item seven is a request for a conditional use permit in order to operate a craft winery within an existing shopping center along Lynn Haven Parkway. And this is really an interesting reuse of several vacant units within this shopping center. No exterior changes to the building are proposed other than signage, and the craft winery is a compatible use within this acous of 70 to 75 and also within accident potential zone two. Parking can be easily accommodated, and there is no known opposition to this application. Item eight is a modification of proffers for a parcel in the London Bridge Commerce Park that is along both Dam Neck and London Bridge Roads. The existing proffers do not permit the use of fiber cement siding as an exterior building material, so this modification will change that and permit this high-quality exterior material to be used. So this is a pretty straightforward request. The proposed office warehouse is permitted under the I-1 light industrial zoning, also within this acous, as well as under the provisions of the existing proffer agreement, and there is no known opposition. Item nine is a request for a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales for up to just 12 vehicles on this 33,000-square-foot site that was formerly a bank. No exterior building alterations are proposed other than signage, and all landscaping requirements can be met on this property. The change from a bank to auto sales actually results in fewer vehicle trips. The Planning Commission did hear this request due to opposition as the applicant did not agree with a recommended condition by staff to close the vehicular ingress egress point that's closest to the intersection, and there was also a speaker in opposition. So we did receive one letter of opposition, and the speaker at the public hearing noted concerns related to traffic, property values, and compatibility with surrounding uses. The Planning Commission does recommend approval, and they do also forward that approval with the recommendation to close that ingress egress point closest to the intersection. Item number 10 is a modification of conditions in order to allow a freestanding sign for this senior housing apartment complex along Shore Drive at the base of the Lesnar Bridge. As a result of a briefing to the Bayfront Advisory Commission, the applicant did reduce the length of the sign from 14 feet down to 18, excuse me, from 14 feet down to eight feet. There was one letter of concern received by staff who noted concerns related to possible site obstructions. Both the location of the, and the size of the sign was reviewed by traffic engineering, and they have no objections. There was, this, this application was on the Planning Commission's consent agenda. Application number 11 is an after-the-fact request for a conditional use permit for an outdoor recreation facility, which in this case is a baseball field in the rural part of Virginia Beach. This eight-acre parcel contains a single-family dwelling, the baseball field, and is Zoned AG2 Agricultural District. A complaint resulted in notification to the property owner of the need for the conditional use permit, and according to the applicant, the field has been on the site since 2014 and is used by their children's teams. The teams use, use the field for 16 weeks for evening weekday practices and also for weekend games. Four letters of support and one letter of opposition was received by staff, and there were three speakers in opposition at the Planning Commission public hearing. The opposition noted ongoing issues related to noise, traffic, and this being an incompatible use in the rural setting. The Planning Commission does recommend approval with a vote of eight to one, with modified conditions that allow banners and signs, an unlimited number of cars to be parked on the site, a limit of two games per weekend day, the installation of a net at the applicant's discretion, and that there be a barrier installed to prohibit use of a shared driveway. Item 12 is a modification of conditions for a recreational campground in the southern part of Virginia Beach. It's very close to the state line, and this campground was originally approved by city council in 1971. Three subsequent modifications have been approved, including two since this property owner purchased the campground in 2015. Included with this application is a proposal to operate a non-commercial marina for guests, a marina store, a gazebo, an event space, as well as a building addition. All improvements are geared to improve the experience for campers rather than to attract non-campers to the campground. Since the applicant bought the property in 2015, it really has become a nationally-recognized facility due to the significant upgrades that the applicant has undertaken, and there is no known opposition for this application. And the last application is that of the owners of the Shack Site at the Oceanfront. This is a request for alternative compliance for various conditional uses and a site layout that does not meet the requirements of the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code. Uses include outdoor dining and entertainment, outdoor recreation, a commercial parking lot, open-air markets or food trucks, and reoccurring special events for fundraising and festivals. The west side of the property contains a surface parking lot that encroaches into the parking setback along the Pacific Avenue frontage. The applicant is proposing a new L-shaped building on the interior of the site that does not meet the build-to requirement or the maximum setback requirement that's established in the Form Base Code. The current site also contains signs and a parking lot that do not meet the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code requirements. The recommended conditions include various site improvements to mitigate adverse impacts of these deviations from the code, and they include streetscape improvements along Pacific Avenue to screen parking and also to improve the pedestrian environment. The Resort Area Commission was briefed on the details of the application and do support the request, and there is no known opposition to this application. And that is the end of the presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, if you have a question, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back to you.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, we'll, we'll open it up for our city council discussions and initiatives.
Councilmember Wooton, and then Councilmember Moss.
Yes, good afternoon. I wanted to follow up with the body on a proposal that I sent out by email last week regarding the process for assigning or appointing people to the task force for the Citizens' Review Panel. I did have quite a few responses and feedback, and some of that response that I received did mention that council members would like to proceed and, and to, as we've done with other commissions and boards, by appointing someone. But also, I had an opportunity to just share the process of reaching out to the community, requesting that if they're interested to fill out a, or complete a talent bank application and provide additional information on their expertise. The goal is to ensure that we make this process transparent and ensure that we're looking for those who are qualified for this position or the most qualified for, for the position. And in the interest of transparency, I'm hoping that we, as a body, will agree to move forward with a process that can include your recommendations, but will also include support and inquiry from the citizens of Virginia Beach who do also want to be a part of the process and be considered on the task force. I would like to, and ask, and I'm considering asking the city clerk to review or provide all of the applications, talent bank applications that were sent to her regarding this position, and ensure that they're in your packets on Friday so that you can review this information so that we can move forward in the next steps of the process to appoint members and individuals to this task force. So thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Wooton, and I certainly encourage anybody to send in a talent bank ask, you know, application, not only for this, but also discerned on the various boards and commission, the, the commissions that we have. We certainly welcome people coming to the plate and helping us make the decisions, and thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Mayor, if I can just provide a little bit of information as well. Councilmembers, to date, I have received seven talent bank applications specifically for this task force. So if I can get direction from council how to, if everybody would like for me to send those out on Friday, we're happy to do so.
I tell you what, please send them out on Friday, you know, of what you have, and, but, you know, certainly will and certainly encourage people to, you know, keep on applying.
The next, Councilmember Moss?
Well, add before you move on, I'm sorry. With that, I wanted to add as well that there are people who also have a talent bank on file who've sent emails that say that they're interested, and so I will submit those names as well, Amanda, so that you can pull those applications for the process. Thank you.
Amanda, are you ready for me?
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Amanda, Ms. Barnes. I just had three items. One, I would like, when I get done, the city manager just to talk, to share with us what he thinks. to share with us what he thinks the way ahead is on our adjudication on STRs. That's one of the items. And what I'd like to know is the council going to receive in advance of Tuesday, a draft of what the budget reconciliation memorandum is going to be? So we will be less surprised and be better prepared for discussion on Tuesday. That's one of the questions I had. And, and thirdly, what is the schedule, Mr. Mayor? You see us on relative to responding to the memorandum we got from the city manager back in April on collective bargaining, which goes, which, which goes into effect on the first of May. I'm not, I'm not asking that to be on the calendar on Tuesday or the next Tuesday after that, but just so that council can get an idea of what our plan is as a body. Those are the three things that I had, and thank you very much.
So Vice Mayor Wood, would you like to respond regarding the reconciliation?
Yes, thank you. I'm working with the city manager on that now. We're meeting again tomorrow and I anticipate having that letter by this weekend for everybody to review.
Okay, and Mr. Moss, from my perspective, given the importance of the, the budget and, you know, what's going on in terms of funding, public safety, and other areas, I think we can at least hold very temporarily the, the discussion on the collective bargaining and, you know, just focus on what we have immediately and from of us. But, you know, once again, it will be a, you know, point of discussion, you know, coming forward. Okay, Mr. DeHane?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Moss. Councilmember Moss, I wasn't sure, what was your request regarding the adjudication for STRs? Are you asking specifically regarding the proposed $200 fee for short-term, short-term rental permit holders?
No, my request was with regards to how we plan to, and maybe, maybe it addressed me by the, the mayor, but I thought you'd have a handle since it's staff. How do we plan, you know, we talked about having this public hearing, which we had on April 20th, but we were also going to have some council discussion so that we could then put something else out again so the public would know where the council was or maybe where consensus of the council was relative. And we were going to then have another public hearing and vote. I'm just interested in like, the mayor just made, which I understand, the budget. So it's something post-May 11th. I'm just looking forward, what is the schedule of the plan, hearings and votes to come to a conclusion on the STR recommendations from the Planning Commission as modified by the council for public comment? That's what I was after. Thank you for the, for the, asking for clarification.
Councilmember Moss, this is Patrick. I'll talk to, we had a plan before we went into the budget process and we had all the budget briefings. And I'll update that plan and then send out a briefing, probably the, a briefing document or just an update document to council in the Friday package. But I think we had a plan to take this up after the budget was completed to bring this back to council for councils for the discussion. As you say, to adjudicate what the next steps look like for STRs. But I'll make sure we clarify that in the Friday package, sir.
Mr. Moss, did you have any additional questions or comments?
I do not. And I appreciate all the comments, especially Mr. Wood and the city manager getting that out before the weekend. Thank you very much, I deeply appreciate it.
Ms. Berluci, if you would like to begin, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the chance this morning to visit the drive-through pantry that was organized by the Virginia Beach Department of Human Services. And I'd like to share my reflections on that experience with the council and with the manager if I could this afternoon. It was a really extraordinary sight to behold. It was, the program was a drive-through pantry at the Virginia Beach Amphitheater, which was organized, as I mentioned, by the Department of Human Services in collaboration with the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and the Eastern Shore and supported by the Virginia Red Cross and a variety of other nonprofits and, and volunteer folks who were there. And the, the line to get into this drive-through pantry was something that I didn't, was not expecting. There were hundreds of cars that snaked their way through Dam Neck Road onto the parking area of the amphitheater. And there were hundreds of cars that went through, representing thou, really thousands of individuals and hundreds of households. And, you know, in witnessing this, this event really challenged my perceptions about our neighbors who are in need of help through this pandemic and generally. And also just enforced my appreciation and support for the professionals and volunteers who work for the city and who are our partners in supporting our community through what's been a challenging year for sure, but really all the time. And I, I want to share with you also this, this pamphlet and brochure that you can sort of see, that was distributed by the professional staff at Human Services that offers resources for rent assistance, mortgage assistance, programs if anyone is experiencing homelessness, as well as support for SNAP benefits, mental health, adult protective services, child protective services, outpatient adult services, and child, youth, and outpatient services. It was just a really unbelievable effort. It was the second of these drive-through pantries that's been organized by Human Services. And I believe they're potentially planning another one for June. But I just want to offer my thanks and appreciation to the entire staff of, of, of Human Services and everyone who was involved. I even saw the director, Eileen Smith, and deputy director, and many, many others out directing traffic and working very much on the front line to support our community. And I think they're deserving of our respect and appreciation and support. And I want to thank them.
Any additional questions or comments under the council initiatives or council discussion? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, thank you. And if I could just make a quick comment, I guess it was in, you know, the paper today on the front page, two articles. Number one, the significant rise in drug deaths, you know, 41%, 2,300 people. And then also the, another article about the increase in anxiety and depression going on. Hopefully with May 15th coming and opening up some of the restrictions, you know, Virginia Beach does have the opportunity to provide a safe place for, you know, people to come and, you know, be on a beach and be safe and everything. This is not a pitch. This is just something that we're able to do as a community. And as we start hopefully seeing the end of the light with COVID, I understand we, in Virginia Beach, we had 250,000 with the first shot and 100,000 plus. You know, we're, hopefully, we're going to see the light at the end of the tunnel with this. You know, we're coming together as a community and, you know, hopefully, you know, we can be that safe haven for so many people to find, you know, respite from, you know, a year that we all endured together. But thank you all for the comments, thank you for the presentations. And we'll recess to our formal, our public hearing at 6 o'clock. Thank you.